Welcome to Thinking Green. I'm Rana and this is going to be airing next week on October 24th, but we are taping on the 17th, so it won't be problematic, except if you want to pick up the phone and call in, you can't. So you'll have to find Alma or me some other way to ask your questions. And that really isn't that hard, but you can't do it tonight. So as you all know, municipal elections are coming up in a few weeks on November 7th. We have elections for City Council and Board of Education. And especially on the City Council side, there are a lot of incumbents running, a lot of previous City Council members running, and not very many new faces. So today, I've invited Alma Nortades, who is running as a Democrat for City Council, who is one of the very few people running who you haven't seen running, you know, many cycles previous to this one. So as I believe that everyone who votes should really know what their options are and as much as they can about all the candidates, welcome Alma.
Thank you. Thank you for having me on.
Yeah, it'll be fun. So I guess to start out, you know, the standard question, and I did go to a City Council meeting last night and thought, "Oh, my God." So why are you running?
It's actually quite simple. My wife and I bought a home here two years ago. We're residents of New London. We're vested in the city, and I care. And there's a need, above all. And I moved here two years ago and quickly figured out that the city government works best when the community comes forward and says, "I want to help." And so that is really where it started was. I just absolutely refuse to complain if I'm not willing to get involved.
And actually, two years ago was when I met you, when I was running, and thank goodness, from my point of view, that it's you, not me, this time around. But can you tell us a little bit about yourself and your background and what kind of skills you bring to the table?
Sure. So I'm from California, grew up in the Santa Barbara area, lived in San Diego for 20 years. I started my career as a professional firefighter. I was very young, early twenties, 50 pounds ago. And I did that for seven years. And it was, my father was the captain of the volunteer fire department in the city that I grew up in. And so that's how I got my interest. And after seven years, I decided, you know, it makes sense, because now I'm a huge, huge proponent of family-work balance. So it makes sense, and even back then, I knew that I did not want to live at a fire station. So I didn't like that aspect of it. And I needed more of a challenge, besides a physical challenge. And so I had a friend who was working for Sony Corporation that said, "Wow, you know, your emergency response skills would really fit into this position that opened up at Sony." Sony had their headquarters in San Diego. And I applied, and I was hired. And I was with them for almost 13 years. And that's really the beginning of my environmental health and safety career. From then, I went on to work for Stanley Black &amp; Decker, then Amazon, and now I work for Bard Corporation out of Rhode Island. So different industries, all doing regulatory compliance, all doing strategic planning for multiple sites. And so that's my background.
So we'll have to talk more about this later, because one of the issues in New London, and Connecticut in general, is I think we're being pulled kicking and screaming into the 21st century, and we need to do some planning. But before we get to that, so you've been here for two years, and at every candidate forum I go to, there are one or two candidates who say, "I'm a lifelong New Londoner. I love this place. I was born here. And, you know, 50 years later, I'm still living here." So what is the advantage, in your eyes, to getting someone who is not a New London resident for 50 years?
Yeah. So the first thing I want to say is that I bring to the table a fresh perspective, right? I mean, I'm not from this area. And I just want to go back, because I have had people say to me, "You're not a real New Londoner."
They said that to me, too, and I've been here since 1994.
And my response is, "Well, you know, the notion that only leaders are from New London, because they were born here, they went to school here," is, I don't buy into that. And so I am a New Londoner. I own a home here, and I'm not going anywhere. So I kind of just dismiss that. Not to say that there are, that I do not, not to say that I, for a lack of appreciation for those that came forward and served, who have been, you know, raised here the whole life, not to take away from that, but, you know, I'm here two years. I quickly got involved. I bring a fresh perspective. I think, you know, somebody said to me the other day, they said, "Oh, you're pretty positive." In general, I'm a positive person. And they said, "Well, I think you just haven't been around long enough to be jaded."
Oh, my.
I said, "No."
Sadly, maybe rings true.
And people do say to me, "Why would you want to get on, you know, why are you running for City Council?" And I don't look at it that way. To me, I'm excited to be able to contribute to some very, very hard, important decisions that will steer the city in the right direction. And I truly believe that I can contribute to that cause, and I'm excited to run.
Now, you've been an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission for a year or a year and a half?
A year and six months, yeah. A year and a half, some months, yeah.
So how has that experience been?
Well, it's been a great experience. And that is part of my desire to run. It all comes full circle. One of the things I learned about planning and zoning is really to be able to differentiate between a developer or an application that comes forward strictly for profit, or one that comes forward that truly benefits the residents of the city. There's a very large distinction between that. And so I find that interesting. I find, you know, how, when I look at New London, I look at, with planning and zoning, how the city is laid out, really, and the current zoning regulations, and do they really make sense, or are we using a playbook from the 1980s? So I have--
Yeah, we could spend probably way too much time talking about that.
You could have a whole other show on that, yeah. So that's all I'm saying about that. But it has given me an appreciation, the changes that will benefit the city and ultimately its residents.
I should mention, though, because I'm also on Planning and Zoning Commission, that the public hearing for the Plan of Conservation and Development is coming up. And I don't, I think it might be, I don't know if it's this Thursday's meeting or in a couple of weeks, but I think that it's really important for people to think about what's in the document.
Yeah, and that is on the agenda this Thursday.
I think it is. So unfortunately, if you're watching this next week, it's past. But I think it's really important for us to know what our goals are for the city, because whether a developer comes in who is for his own profit, or for the good of the city, we have to know what we want. And New London has sadly often not negotiated from a position of strength when people come in.
Yeah. And that all goes back to having a vision, right? And as you mentioned before, when you talk about vision, you have to talk about strategic planning. And that has to do with the infrastructure of the city, the services of the city. It has to do with the money in the bucket, like I'd like to say. All that comes together when you have a plan. And I know you're going to talk about the budget and taxes, but you know, the work starts yesterday. You know, we really need to start looking at what position we'll be in when budget season comes around. And now it's time to really dig into the dollars. So I'll wait for you to ask that question.
Yeah. Well, it is interesting, because I see a budget process as being a setting of priorities. I mean, you do have to attach dollar figures to it at a certain point, but what you're really doing is deciding what your values are and what you want to do. And those are the things you, in theory at least, want to invest in.
Yeah. But part of the strategic planning is to have those, you know, I call it a road map, but they're milestones, right? Because if not, you're going to be approving budgets that are stagnant. And they're, you know, what's the value? What's the payback with that? And so I really, you know, I'm excited that when I do, if I do, get on council, that I'll be involved in that process, so.
So, okay. It's on everyone's mind. And we keep hearing, "Taxes are so high. This is such an expensive place to live. It's driving people out." What are your thoughts on the affordability of New London?
I have a different perspective. I'm from San Diego. But that's not, you know, that's not to take away from the people that are used to this type of economy. For my personal opinion is that if you compare it to where I'm from, it's not expensive at all. However, at the last debate, I did meet several people. One who told me, "Look, I'm on a fixed income. And an extra $200 added to my mortgage a month really, really hurts me." And so I get that. I get that people just, you know, within a couple of months, are now facing an increase in costs. And, you know, I kind of look at my own household budget. You know, we're both professionals, but if one day I woke up and one-third of our, we weren't sure where one-third of our income was coming from, we would be making some cuts, and they would be dressed to cuts. So I understand that.
And I do sometimes think that people who have never lived outside of New London have a little bit of an overly rosy picture of how affordable other places are, especially in comparison with the services. I know it would be cheaper to live in Florida, but like, who would? Well, I don't want to offend anyone who's out there who loves Florida, but really, we have so much here that it's worth something to me in a monetary way, as well as, you know, a quality-of-life thing. Well, so I did, I don't go to City Council meetings very frequently anymore. But of course, one of the big topics of discussion was the budget. And one of the problems that New London has is that more than affluent communities, we are dependent on the state of the state. Because, you know, we get subsidized to a great extent by the state government, partly, well, I think it's sort of a setup, the way property taxes are levied. You know, we have a lot of non-taxable property. But I guess before we talk about the New London budget, what do you think city government can do to, I don't know, decrease our dependency on the state largess?
Well, I get asked that question quite a bit. And really, I believe that that's the direction that we're going in, that we, with so much uncertainty, we need to be less dependent on the state. Like I mentioned, one-third of our, one-third of our city budget comes from the state. I really want to have a serious dialogue about regionalization and consolidation within the city, city and education side. I mean, we've talked a little bit about that. But I don't, I don't think that that's, you know, people have touched on it, but I'm really going to be, you know, talking seriously about what is the, what's the value added there. I want to give you an example. Before I came over here, I was, I took a tour of the Homeless Hospitality Center. I was invited to go and spent an hour with them and their team. And they gave me a tour, along with a bunch of other volunteers that were there contributing their time. And we talked about that. We talked about what other services around here provide to getting people back on their feet. And Norwich and New London. And that's it. That was it. That was the extent of it. And when I look at that, I think, you know, it's not, one, it's not fair. Number two, why are other municipalities surrounding New London, New London County, contributing to this worldwide problem? I mean, you know, it's definitely Connecticut, but we see homelessness everywhere in every state, right? So I look at that, and I shake my head and go, "Wow, there's some opportunity there." Even within New London, what I see is a lot of redundancy. And when I mean redundancy, I mean, for example, social services doing similar things. Not exactly, but when I look at that, I see possibility of merging and consolidating. So, you know, we can also talk about Police Department and Fire Department. I mean, those are areas that people don't generally want to discuss, but we need to have serious talk about that.
I love discussing those. Because, well, and I have a quote here. Let me find it. I don't know if you know of Art Rolnick, but Art Rolnick was a longtime vice president of research for the Minneapolis Federal Reserve. And I got to know him, about him, about 15 years ago, because it was relevant to my work advocating for early childhood education. So this is what he says. His specialty is economic development. "Conventional economic development policies use public subsidies and tax breaks to attract businesses and jobs from one location to another. Such policies lead to economic bidding wars and are counterproductive. Allowing cities and states to lure businesses from other cities and states with public funds only moves jobs around. It does not create any new one. So if providing public subsidies to private businesses is the wrong way to promote economic development, what is the right way?" And his conclusion is education, especially early childhood education and educating at-risk children. So that's where I learned about him, from the early childhood perspective. But his mindset is, you look at where you're going to get a return on your investment, and the biggest return on your investment. And part of the reason I like talking in a contrarian way about police and fire is that I don't actually believe that they're, we get the best return on investment from emergency services. Not that I want to get rid of them entirely, but there, I think you get a better return on investment from some other things that we can put money into. So I guess it's been a little controversial, and I don't really want to get into things we might be voting on in planning and zoning. But there is a plan to make parts of the city more walkable, more bikeable, and kind of repair the street grid that was torn up. So what are your feelings about where in the city we could use some improvements that way, and what directions we could go?
Well, when we look at downtown, I really believe that we should start looking at changing the regulation. I'm a big fan of form-based coding. I am. It makes sense to me. There's other municipalities here in Connecticut that have done that.
Yeah, Hampton and Hartford.
Yes, exactly. And Simsbury is another one. So with success. I mean, we don't know long-term, but for now, I mean, what I like about it is, is that with traditional zoning regulations, it's what you're using it for, rather than what it looks like. And I think that's going to play a big part in how we develop downtown and the Historic District Commission, I mean Historic District. Because, you know, the residents that like to spend time downtown, the tourists that come downtown, it would flow. It would make sense. We could have mixed use. Not that we don't already, but it just, for me, it's a better plan. Because right now, you know, as we know, we've had some, we've had some recent things that have come up with, you know, historic property wanting to be, you know, changed drastically. And even though they're on the historic list, right, they're register, you know, historic registry. So I think that if we, if we had a solid ordinance, I guess we would have to be, it would have to be, yeah. I think that that would, that would get rid of some of the guessing. You know, for example, you're a developer, you come in, you know that you have to abide by the same rules the next developer has to. So I think that's important. And I also think it attracts developers, because they go, "Wow, you know, there's no guessing at this point."
I think that's true. And when I mentioned before that New London sometimes doesn't negotiate from its strength, I think about, at one point, I think there was a Dunkin' Donuts that wanted to go into Main Street and Iantic. And they were basically told their standard design building would not be allowed. They would have to fit into what the streetscape rules were for Main Street and Iantic. And I think it would be really important for us, I agree, that having form-based code and just preserving what we have left of our streetscape would be really important.
Yeah. And I also talked about, you know, just the way that the, I'll leave it at this, just the way that the city is laid out. Last week, I attended a Hodges Square meeting, and, you know, we're still trying to connect. I mean, it is New London. We're still trying to connect those two areas. And I think that's really important. And I think, and I admire the committee that they put together, because they continue to drive that and make people aware that it's so important. So it includes all of it, you know, directions of streets.
Oh, yeah.
Where are people going to go when they get off the ferry? Be sighted in their car and on the freeway into Mystic, yeah.
Yeah, almost without even trying. It's like easier to go to Mystic than it is to go to downtown New London.
Yeah. And even the, you know, the, these new developments that are coming up, I mean, I would like to see every development, the larger ones that were recently Shipway 221 and J. Parcel, using smart growth. I think that's important. And it all falls into our POCD, where, you know, it's walkable, it's bikeable, it's close to, people can work and live in the same areas. And I think that's really important, you know, building up, instead of out, protecting open space. That's all part of the smart growth principle. So I support that.
Well, it's funny that you should mention up and not out, because I was, earlier today, I, we taped a show with the interim superintendent of schools and the finance director. And when talking to the interim superintendent, who's pretty new in town, I was trying to explain why the Coast Guard Academy wanted to buy a piece of Riverside Park. And it really boiled down to parking, that the federal government doesn't like paying for parking garages. So this campus has a ton of surface parking that could be usable space.
Right.
So I think whenever you have, you know, a city that isn't rich in land, we're rich in a ton of things. We have, you know, water, we have rail, we have culture, we have, we've got all kinds of history. But what we don't have is a lot of rail.
Right.
And so the idea of, you know, having a lot of surface parking in any big development just seems so wasteful.
It's frustrating, yeah. It doesn't make, yeah. I'll leave it at that.
But when you talked about green building also, let's talk a little bit about what you'd see as an energy plan for the future for New London.
As in solar?
That would certainly be a piece of it in my book.
Well, you know, that's part of the infrastructure, right? I mean, that, to me, that when you have a vision, it's a goal, whether it's obtainable or not, we need to start having that discussion. And, you know, it's, I, when I think about solar, I think about when we, when we're, when we have, you know, when we built these new schools, and we decided to bond for the high, for the new high school, it wasn't factored in. And I can't, I wasn't around, so I don't know the details. But I'm disappointed that that wasn't a priority with those projects, because the return is there.
It is.
So.
It was terribly frustrating to watch. I'll just tell you that.
I can imagine.
Because in the same window of time, Waterford was rebuilding a lot of their schools. I think Quaker Hill Elementary School was redone about the same time that Jennings was done in, in New London. And, you know, Quaker Hill has geothermal heating. It's a LEED, at least LEED Silver, maybe LEED Gold certified. And I don't think its price tag for construction was actually higher than what we paid. And I'm sure maintenance is lower. So--
It's one of those things that just makes sense.
Yes.
Yet we, for whatever reasons, we didn't capture that opportunity.
And one reason that I think that we should be looking at, like, new faces on, you know, in decision-making bodies, because sometimes it just seems as though things are done a certain way, because when we did it 10 years ago, it was done that way. And then when that was done that way, because 20 years ago, it was done that way.
I would agree. I mean, even now, you know, I hear, I hear leaders speak, and I just go, "Well, we need a little bit of innovation. We need a little bit of, you know, people use this term, thinking out of the box, but we really need to be creative." And we have been doing things, some things the same way, without, with very little success. So at some point, you've got to, you've got to learn it, learn these new concepts, do your homework, speak to people, compare ideas of what works in other municipalities, and then make your decision. But I don't buy into that. It's always been done this way. It doesn't, where I'm from, it doesn't work that way. So--
Yeah. I don't know. I'm from Philadelphia. I don't know how that is. But, well, and related to the energy situation, half of our boundary is coastline. And we are seeing, not so much in New London this year, but all around the country, and actually the world. We're seeing superstorms. We're seeing a lot of threats to the coastline. And just in general, we're seeing the potential for rising sea levels. And that could really impact New London. So strategic planning, what can we do to minimize the negative impact?
Well, currently, you know, we do have buy-in from governing bodies when we have developers that come in on the coastline. I mean, we do need approvals for that, whether or not they're in the flood zone, whether or not they're going to environmentally impact the water or the ground, what they're next to. I mean, all, there's a whole list of things to look at. You know, I think that, I think that we're doing that now. I think, I think for me, the big part is, is that people need to understand global warming, and that it is real, and that, you know, it's unpredictable, as we just saw the last couple of months. We just--
Right.
And we need to also be prepared. And I'm not so sure the city is prepared. I have, I have not done my research on that. I'm not sure what emergency systems we have in place. But it's real. And so when people, you know, people talk about, "Oh, you know, climate change, it's a hoax." I just want--
But if you're wrong, boy, we could really suffer. Well, one thing I have been happy to see, you know, seeing plans coming through Planning and Zoning, is that every plan that involves paving or, or building on what was previously a permeable surface, has a stormwater plan. And that, I think, is something we've only seen over the last, started to see over the last few years. So at least--
I thought, I'm sorry. I thought it was always there.
I don't think it was always there.
Well, not always, but at least in the last 20 years. Stormwater?
I don't know.
No?
Five years, maybe. I don't know. But I don't think it's been as detailed that--
You know, which, I'm sorry to interrupt, but actually, you know, I've been doing environmental health and safety for years, almost 25 years at this point. And California is the leader in regulator, in regulations.
Oh, yeah.
And so it makes sense to me that I have been, you know, writing and interpreting stormwater policies and procedures for a lot longer than it's actually taken place in Connecticut.
I think California has been ahead of the curve.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Because back in the mid nineteen seventies, we purchased a, well, this is really gonna sound stereotypical, a Volkswagen bus, but it was a California bus, not one from, we lived in Oregon. And it really, it had emissions controls and that were not present on the vehicles that weren't from California. So that was probably about like nineteen seventy-five or six. So I think it's California maybe is, has been ahead of the curve for, for a couple of decades.
Yeah, I'm not surprised then, at this point.
Um, one question that came up at the, uh, recent Neighborhood Alliance Forum debate was charter reform. And I was very frustrated that it was being asked as a yes or no question. Do you favor it or you don't favor it without asking people at least one thing? If they want to cha- change, they'd like to see change.
Yeah, so I, I was, um, if you remember, I declined to answer that. And, you know, I, yes or no to me is, is not, um, I, I didn't think it was appropriate in that question. The charter, you know, when I look at the charter, I, I've, you know, I've looked at it. It's really, you know, a, a large piece of, of document. I have no reason to go there unless I'm looking for something, right? And, and because I'm not an incumbent, so I have, I haven't been using the charter. But there are some things in there that, um, that I do support. Um, for example, um, I do support staggered terms. Um, I do support, um, taking out, you know, that you have to be a resident of New London for certain positions. So there are some things, but, you know, I pride myself in doing my homework and research. And I, and I wish there would have been discussion about that. I don't think it's a black and white issue.
No, and, and I hope maybe in some of the future, uh, forums. I know there's one that's, uh, being sponsored by League of Women Voters.
Right.
N double A C P and Centro, um, I think on the twenty-third.
The twenty-third, yes.
Um, so may, I have a feeling that that may give a little more space to discuss it. Because I also was not sure whether people who were answering yes wanted to go return from a mayoral form of government to a city.
Yeah, that's a great point. You don't know. I mean, it's a yes or no question, it does not give them, um, the ability to be able to speak why they, they took that position. I'm not sure everybody even under, I, I don't know. It's, we'll never know because, because we didn't go back to it, so.
No, it was really interesting to me.
I would have preferred that question come from an audience member that says, this is in the charter, what do you think about this? That, that, to me, that would have made more sense.
And, and there were, there was a Charter Revision Commission in a twen- two thousand nine, twenty-ten, which shifted us from a city manager point, uh, form of government to mayoral. But they had made several other very interesting suggestions, including staggered tr- terms, four-year staggered terms, uh, including having some district representation on city council, including, uh, uh, saying the mayor had to be, uh, elected by a majority vote, not a plurality vote, which, uh, it didn't really co- come into play, but it almost did the first year when we had six different candidates running for mayor.
Wow.
Yeah, well, yeah, it was an interest, I won't relive that. But it, it could have been a real issue. Someone could have won by plurality who had a very high disapproval rating as well.
Yeah, you know, I, yeah, I, I hope, I hope in the day. In the next, I hope in the next couple of debates, it, we'll have more opportunity to really talk about why, why we believe that and, you know, it's specific, so.
Now, back to taxes. Um, we did hear a few ideas at that debate. And I, I think, you know, I'm sure you get asked it all the time. We have, you know, probably close to fifty percent of our property off the tax rolls and including things that were sold from for-profit to nonprofit entities in the last five or ten years. I'm thinking the old Namieog School where there's Sound Community Services now had been a for-profit medical building. Uh, the Lawrence Memorial Building on Howard Street. So even one sale can, can like reduce your grant list just because of ownership changes. So what suggestions do you have that might help make things more equitable for taxpayers?
I touched on the, and by the way, I, I know of no other municipality that has forty-four percent all of such a small, um, you know, land that's.
And, and most of them are, are, are properties that, that serve a, a region far beyond our own borders.
Absolutely, yeah. So I did touch, uh, touch a little bit at the debate on this. And this is a, this is an idea that's, um, you know, been, been discussed amongst the leaders and, you know, community input. And that is to step back and say, because we have such a high percentage of nonprofits to, because we can't tax them, it's illegal to do that, but at least be able to, um, charge fees for services. And I think it's a fair approach. Um, and I, I don't know what the number is, um, that's, that's, those are much bigger discussions. But I do think it's fair in the sense that, um, that the services are being used and we are a municipality that is in very, very hard times right now. And I would support that, so that's what I'm gonna say about that. There are, now, there are other areas of revenues. I heard somebody say the other ti- the other day, they were talking about parking at night in the, in the garage. You know, the, the city on Garage, I wanna say that since we've hired that new company, the revenue has increased like forty, forty-six percent. Um, so we are seeing a change in tide there. It's po- it's very positive. I mean, they're making some changes. It's gonna go back into the fund. There are some improvements that need to, that need to be made down there. You know, we put in the parking meters for, uh, O'Neill Drive.
And I assume there will be parking meters on St. Bank Street at some point.
At some point. And, um, you know, we haven't, and there's other areas that we haven't tapped into. Um, for example, we know that the, there are Air, Airbnbs here in, in New London. Uh, and, you know, what does that look like as far as, um, being able to have that tax that goes back into the, into the city fund? And we've, uh, talked about, um, additional hotel tax. Now, there's a hotel that's looking at property over in the Fort Tremble area right now. We are hoping that that goes through and it will be huge for us. And why not, at that time, as you said earlier, be in a position to say, well, we're gonna add, you know, an extra, uh, hotel tax that goes back into the city? So, you know, those are two examples, um, that, that, as far as the parking, I mean, we don't make a lot of money in parking. I mean, that's, that's, long, long-term, it's not. But there, the, the process of parking in the city of New London could be more efficient, in my opinion. I gotta tell.
Oh, yeah, it's really inefficient as it is.
It's very inefficient. And I gotta tell you, just a, just a quick story. We, we moved here, but we bought a house, we moved in, and I parked downtown in Bank. We had only been here for three weeks and I got a ticket on my car. I might have told you this story already. I got a ticket on my car and the first thing, and I'm from San Diego. The first thing I noticed was it's twenty-five dollars. Well, what's the point? I mean, you know, I get a ticket for, uh, for an expired meter, meter of parking in the yellow zone in San Diego and I'm looking at minimum seventy-five, you know? Usually seventy-five, eighty-five, ninety dollars. Um, so I was shocked. I was totally shocked by that.
Although if you don't pay it within a week, it doubles.
Oh, so the story gets better. Uh, this was back in two thousand and fifteen. So I, uh, I, I put the ticket in my car, I completely forgot about it. And the, and I said, oh, gosh, it's, I gotta mail that off. Got the ticket and it was due, um, that day. And I was on my way to work. And I said, ah, I don't have time to mail it in, so I'm gonna leave early. I'm gonna go down because the address is on the ticket where you can walk in and just pay. So I get off work early, go down to City Hall where the address is, and I'm walking around, walking around. It's not there! And so I, I walk into this office and say, I'm looking to where I could pay the ticket. And the woman says, oh, that doesn't exist anymore. So I said, where can I pay this ticket? She said, well, you gotta go up the street around the corner. And I said, do you have a paper with, you know, we, we apologize for the inconvenience? Here's the address and the directions? No, I said, do you know the address? She's yelling back at someone, do you know the address? And I was just shocked. And I remember, um, being very upset and going home and telling my wife, Margaret, you're not gonna believe this. And I think it was, you know, at that, at that time when I really started to think, wow. I mean, there, there are some things that need, to need, need to be changed. And that's, that's when I started to get involved. And, you know, I did, I, I didn't even pay the ticket. I mailed that in the next day and I never, and they accepted my twenty-five dollar check even though it was late. And I never heard from them again, so. A, a good example of the frustrations that the residents feel, the systems that are in place that are, they're ineffective and inefficient. And there's a lot, I have a feeling there's a lot of revenue being lost, lot of revenue. So, and other, other areas of the city, so.
And, and I think when it comes to parking also, you know, even in our downtown area, we have a lot of surface lots that are full during a certain part of the week and empty the rest of the time. And, you know, in the city, every piece of land should be occupied all the time with something.
Right.
So even the private parking, I, I think we could play a part in managing better because, you know, if there's a company that has employee parking, you know, Monday through Friday, why can't they make an arrangement that city residents can use it for going out to dinner or whatever?
That's what San Diego does, I mean, yeah.
The rest of the week, uh, because it's taking up space that isn't going for much. And, you know, in terms of public safety, and we'll talk, you know, we have time to talk a little bit about public safety emergency services, but I also wanna talk about public safety preventive services. And walking across parking lots late at night does not feel like your safest activity.
Right, I know, I agree, a hundred percent, yeah.
So, um, back to budget inevitably. It seems to me often, a- as someone who is passionate both about education and infrastructure, that so often the sacred cows are the police department and the fire department, which are to a great extent reactive, um, uh, in their missions. And education and public works ta- seem to be the first places where layoffs happen. And, um, can you speak to like how, what you would see as the right balance between paying for fire and, and emergency response in relationship to, you know, public work spending to keep like trash off the street and education spending?
So what are you asking me specifically? How the, how the budgets are divvied up or?
Yeah, I, I guess so. I mean, what your priorities would be, uh, in terms of spending. I, I, I have to tell you, uh, one thing I learned when I was on the Board of Ed was it is shocking how little of the budget is discretionary. So you, you don't have the wiggle room that people think you, you do because, you know, eighty percent of the budget is probably contractual obligations. But, um.
Well, I, let me, so let me just go back to that. I mean, um, you gave me four examples and, um, I, I have to say, for me, public safety is a priority, and I'm gonna tell you why. I mean, you, you know, public works, we can have a beautiful downtown area and safe streets, but if our crime rate, uh, is off the chart, um, it, it's not safe for our residents, it's not safe for visitors in the city. So I do, um, and that's not taking away from education or any, but I, I do. Public safety is part of my background. Um, you know, I was a professional firefighter for seven years. I understand the need. Um, and then now I work in a, in a, uh, in a company where, you know, I look at budgets. I have a budget. Uh, and I, and I have budgets for other sites, so, um, it, I gotta say, you know, it, it, it's not, for me, it's not one or the other. What, what, I, you know, I, I want us to be the first all magnet school, um, district in, in, in Connecticut. I really, I really want that. And I, I know that in order to achieve that, we have to have a realistic, operating, sustainable budget. I know that. You have to have people that are in these positions that know, have a background in budgeting, right? That are professionals that are coming in. And so I don't wanna take any way, uh, away from that. My focus is gonna be getting money in that bucket. And so that we're not fighting, uh, and it's so difficult during, during budget season, right? And it becomes, you know, what I'm seeing now is, it's, uh, you know, the necessary cuts that we're gonna have to, that we've made last night.
I disagree that they were necessary.
Okay. The cut that was ma- the cut that was made, that, 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 that that's taking a worst-case scenario and that I truly believe that once we get the budget, that that money is gonna go back into.
But I'll tell you what my problem is with that.
Are we talking about something else now?
No, well.
Are we going back to public, public safety or are we talking about education?
Well, we'll go back to public safety, but since you brought up the, the, the education cuts, we are in a risky situation.
Yeah.
And the choice was made by council to lay all of the risk on the education budget.
Versus the city, um.
Yes, because if the funding doesn't come through, it's all on the education budget. Everything might work out, but if it doesn't work out, the risk rests with education. And I think that was incredibly unfair. But on the public safety, I, I do have a specific, um, I don't know, pet peeve. We're five point five square miles. We have a population of about twenty-seven thousand. Do we really need to have fo- three firehouses staff twenty-four seven? Does that make us safer?
Um, so, so somebody else said that to me the other day. And I, I'm gonna be, you know, very straightforward, is that I have not, I don't know how many, how much staff is in those fire departments. I don't know what areas they are. Um, that's something that I have not looked at. Do you have your numbers?
No, no, I, I actually have a map. We have, um, and we have three firehouses. We have one on Broad Street, which is.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that.
Yeah, and that one would have to stay. That's central command. In case of emergencies, it's out of the floodplain. But then we have the one on Bank Street and then we have one down on South on Lower Boulevard.
Yeah, so they, they are in close proximity. Uh, and I have to say, you know, there, we have to look at the response time. This is a very small, uh, area.
It is.
Uh, so I can't give you an answer right now, but I, I would definitely be.
But please look at it.
I would definitely be pushed with that.
And I'll even give you the map. And, and the New London firehouses, I have on red stars. But I think we have reciprocal agreements with Waterford. And there are Waterford Fire Departments at Kohansey, near Crystal Mall, uh, Jordan, near the, um, on Boston Post Road, uh, just past Great Neck Road, and Goshen, which is down near Pleasure Beach. And all of those are within two miles of, of the, um, New London border. So I would hope that you'll look at it, but I believe that you'll look at it.
I will, I will definitely look at it.
It is one of my pet peeves because it doesn't come up off, I, I won't say it never comes up, but it doesn't come up often. And I, 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 so I think that, that people need to think about it. Okay, we have five minutes left. So what do you wanna tell people about in the, the five minutes? Do you wanna tell them how they can support your campaign, though you cannot ask for money? But you can ask for any other kind of support?
Well, I would, I would, I would like to remind, um, the general public that I do have a political website, a website on Facebook, Almena Tardes, uh, for New London City Council. And that, um, I am going door to door. According to my calculations, it's been about almost eight hundred doors at this point. That's a lot of doors.
That is a lot of doors.
Coming home and changing clothes and hitting the streets, even if it's two blocks at a time.
So how's the experience been?
Uh, so it's very, been very positive, um, except the time I got bit by a dog. That was, that was not a good day.
Was it a little dog?
It was a little dog, yeah.
Yeah, it always is a little.
For the, for the most part, I think people are, um, genuinely interested in what I have to say. And, um, they, they're putting a, a real person behind the bright yellow sign that they see around town.
They are great signs.
So, um, so I'm getting very positive. I, I feel like I'm getting a lot of support, um, very positive feedback. I, 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 um, really want the chance to be able to get elected and show, and, and, you know, show people that I'm going to work hard and, and do my homework to understand the issues. And, um, and I didn't mention this before, but I will throw it out there that, you know, you talked about being a New Londoner, you know? Besides the fresh perspective, I, I don't have any conflict of interest and I think that's huge.
That is huge.
My, my closest relative is two thousand miles away. And so, you know, it kinda takes away that, having to worry about my uncle owning that property at the corner or, you know, who I'm related to, so.
And I, and I will say, from my own experience, both, you know, because we're friends and also because we've been on planning and zoning, that I get the impression you're not really afraid to, uh, speak your opinion, even if it is not necessarily what people wanna hear or the mainstream or what you expect. what people wanna hear or the mainstream or what you expect to hear.
Yeah.
Which is valuable.
Yeah, and another thing I wanna say is that, is, is, you know, I may, so I'm not afraid to have an opinion and also tell you why I, I have that opinion, right? Based on what I know and what homework and what I've been able to verify. Um, what drives me nuts is people that have an opinion or vote in a certain way and say nothing. They have no explanation. Um, and I just think that's wrong. And it really is a discredit to the residents of New London. Um, they need to have leaders in place who can easily articulate what, the messages they're putting across and why they made the decision, right? I think effective communication is something that's missing. Uh, and I wanna bring that back to the council. And you know what? Um, one of the things that I do for a living, that, that why I, and, and why I'm so passionate about, about my personal profession is I oversee sites that, that may not be in compliance. And so sometimes I've gotta really work to get them to do something they don't really wanna do. There's some finesse there. And, uh, and, and so I work well with people. I, you know, I, I'm able to, and in, in this case, doesn't matter what party affiliation you're with, i- if we have, all have the same cause, that's what's important to me.
And we all have to work together on the same boards and commissions, whatever, or party affiliation.
Right.
Well, thank you, Alma. Good luck. Election Day is November seventh. I'm sure you'll see Alma at, at, at one of the polling places, um, all day long.
Yep.
And, um, more to come on, on the elections over the next week or so.
Right.
So thank you.
Thank you.